Welcome, everyone. I would like to call this committee of the whole meeting on Tuesday, September 10th, at 4:00 PM to order. Lindsey, may we have roll call?
Benadryl.
Present.
Randy.
Here.
Neiman.
Here.
Mala.
Here.
Karen.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Thank you. Would everybody stand and recite the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge to constitute the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, any motion?
A little bit. Support?
All in favor?
Aye.
Posting on motion carries. And there was no minutes. The minutes were from last, last one week. At this time, it's for public input. Is there anyone wishing to address this committee? Please come forward. Going once, going twice. Public input is closed. Petitions communications. We have a presentation from Phil Icke regarding the quarterly report for Hay Bay City.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having us here to present our quarter two Hay Bay City update. So my name is Sarah Parker, and I am the Director of Workforce Development with the Bay Area Chamber of Commerce, as well as the Hay Bay City Initiative. When Hay Bay City first began in June of 2022, there was a fund balance of $581,500. Funds remaining as of June 30th are $200,596.37. Assuming a consistent rate of spending, funds are estimated to be exhausted around August of 2025. Here are our quarter two website metrics for workforce development. We had 44 employers sign up to use our Hay Bay City job platform. 178 open Bay County opportunities have been posted. We've had over 20,000 job position views and 67,000 job page views. We've also received 34 resumes via Typeform, which is our resume database, submission database. We had 936 apply clicks, which is our end goal metric. This is the same metric used by the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. We hope that with our face-to-face meetings and relationship building with our Bay County employers, we hope to see what happens after that apply click is made. In quarter two, I met with 74 employers, educators, local workforce development agencies, and other community partners to discuss recruiting strategies and workforce needs. In addition to the 34 resumes submitted via Typeform, I also personally received 13 resumes from job seekers, bringing our total resumes submitted to 47 resumes. 23 open opportunities have been sent to those job seekers, and I personally worked with four of those job seekers to build and modernize their resumes. New to our resume database is geographic location. We're using this to help support our goal of attraction to negate the population decline. We're also working and collaborating with Michigan Works and local universities and schools. We're now employer partners with Saginaw Valley State University. Through this, we're able to offer support to Saginaw Valley students, and again, to help further the attraction to our beautiful Bay County. We've also worked directly with the Delta College Internship Program and have distributed intern information, internship information to over 20 Bay County businesses. With this, we've also paired information on the STEAM Ahead program to show the additional resources available to our valued Bay County businesses. Lastly, I would like to share the impact of STEM Fest 2024. Hay Bay City and other employer partners were able to provide to our Bay County K-12 students. 217 students were impacted by this event. 63% of those students were exposed to STEM activities and careers for the very first time. 59% of those students were on free or reduced lunch, which helps us to further understand the demographics and how best to meet the needs of our community. We also had 46 professional volunteers, 36 college volunteers, and a total of 246 mentor hours, mentor impact hours. We can't do this alone, and we'd like to thank you all for your continued support of the county and of our outstanding community. And now I'll pass it off to Phil Icke, who is our Director of Marketing and Placemaking. Thank you.
Website had 139,000 views for quarter two. That's up 30% from quarter one, and we are 275% larger than we were at quarter two of last year. 54,000 users for quarter two. That's 77% larger than quarter one, and we are 501% larger than we were in quarter two of last year. The jobs page views for quarter one, that was 59,000. The jobs page views for quarter two, that was 67,000. That's an increase of 15%. Just as a comparative number, for all of 2023, we had seen 86,000 views on that job page, so considerably more traffic there looking for Bay County employment. Most of that traffic is coming to us from Detroit metro area or from locations that we're unable to track due to their browser privacy settings. That's followed by Bay City, Ashburn, Virginia, that's out in the Washington DC area, Grand Rapids, and Saginaw. Most of that traffic comes to us from social media, both in paid and organic forms, followed by direct traffic, so that's just typing in haybaycity.com or clicking a bookmark in your browser, and then followed by our paid search campaign. That's Google AdWords. Don't worry about the numbers here. I'm just splitting the analytics based on social media platforms, so Facebook, Instagram, and LinkedIn. You combine those metrics for the followings of 1.86 million views. That's up 24%. Total social media followers, 15,909. That's up 17%. Email subscribers, 3,610. That's up 10%. SMS subscribers, it's 1,176. I'll talk about what that is in just a second. Gives us a total audience, or like a follower count, if you want to call it that, of 20,695. Social media is great for reaching a lot of people very quickly and efficiently, but a lot of times it feels like you're playing in somebody else's playground based on their rules, based on algorithms and changes and what Facebook wants you to post or not. And so it's important to also build ancillary marketing channels, and we do that through SMS marketing, text-based marketing. We launched that in quarter two. So it's similar to email, only it comes directly to your phone in the form of a text message. So folks, when they get to the website, they can type in their, they can give us their phone number, and then either monthly or twice a month, we'll send them a message highlighting stories that we think they should check out, coming events, or job opportunities that we want to point out to them. Right now, we've got 1,176 people subscribe to that service. This slide just points out something that we haven't really pointed out in our report so far, in that we tell stories like we do to capture people's attention and drive traffic to the website and the jobs page and communicate quality of life and our culture and all of those things. But the stories we do also offer direct economic small business support, because when we feature a business, they suddenly have this influx of attention and people going, "Yeah, I love Keith Markstrom." If you checked this out this morning, we had a big story on Keith and the Veterans Foundation, the great work they're doing over there. Here's two examples. Typically, when I run a story, I'll follow up with the business after just to say thank you, and then provide them with a little bit of insight as to how their series did. On the left, Lead Bellies Barbecue and Soul Food, their new business on Columbus Avenue. And then on the right, Bay City Boat Rentals, they work out of Scotty's Sandbar there in the middle grounds. On the left, saying, "Thanks for the story. It reached 94,750 people." They said, "Thank you back." On the right, I said, "Reached 66,000." They responded, "That's amazing." They were so excited. I had to bleep out one of their, that's a little blank in there. They were so excited. "That's amazing." That post definitely blew up. We also got over 2,000 website visitors from that post, which is the most we've ever had in a day. We're super appreciative for that story, man. So we're really fortunate that as we build this audience of Hay Bay City, we're able to leverage that for our small businesses and reach people at a level that they wouldn't be able to do otherwise. Specifically important for these two businesses because they're brand, brand new. They'd just been open a couple weeks, and we were able to give them some firepower and help them get off on the right foot. So very cool there. A Q2 content breakdown, you can look at that at your leisure. That just highlights either stories or lists either stories or shared content or photos that we shared on our platforms. Continued there in that second screen, this is a list of potential Q3 content that's coming. We had a little duplicate column there, but keep your eyes open for like Stillson handmade signs out of Essexville. Very cool there. I got confirmation from the MEDC and the patronicity group that we'll be able to start running the crowdfunding campaign for the Linwood Park project on the 18th. So I met with Laura Ogar, met up with a bunch of folks from Linwood, talked about how important this project is and about their pride for Linwood, and so we're going to be rolling that out and helping direct people to that crowdfunding campaign. $25,000 is what we're shooting for. Very cool, because if we meet that, MEDC will match that, and so we'll have $50,000 coming towards that amazing project. Very, very cool. Just a couple things I want to highlight in the realm of placemaking. We do coffee in a cleanup about monthly. We meet up with Bay Area Energize Young Professional Network and invite volunteers to join us. We'll pick a random spot in Bay County and pull weeds and pick up trash for an hour and then meet for coffee afterwards. We did Columbus Avenue the last couple times. I think the first week of October will be our next one. City of Mural Festival just happened, had three murals come to Bay City in various districts. We helped promote that. Lots of, lots of momentum behind public art in Bay City, Bay County, and we're looking forward to expanding that throughout the county as well, outside the city limits. One slide that didn't make it because it came, we were notified after I sent this. Hay Bay City won the Silver Award in Talent Development and Attraction from the International Economic Development Council. They're a big deal. We had to submit the project or program design and data and evidence of that data and all those things. They compared us to communities up to 200,000 people from across the country and also internationally, and we walked away with the silver. So that's, that's very, very cool to get that kind of recognition from, from them. It's another sign that we're, we're on the right track. We're doing the right things. We can keep getting better, but we're at least going in the right direction. And this slide, of course, just reminding us that we need to all be moving in the right direction together, whatever part of the community that we're serving, from the government to infrastructure, to housing, to other forms of community development. Reversing this trend of population decline is going to take all hands on deck, working hard together for a long time in order to reverse it. And so I'm, I'm encouraged. I think we can do it. We just have to be able to talk about our issues together and then work on those issues together and just, just keep getting better. So if you have questions that you want to reach out to us personally, here's our email addresses. But if you have questions for us right now, we'd be happy to, to take those. If not, Jamie, good to see you.
Good to see you. I do have a question.
Yeah.
Because I was trying to write as fast as I could.
Yeah.
I'm getting older, though.
Same.
Yeah, you're doing fine. Silver award from where?
International Economic Development Council.
The IDDC is the National Trade Association, breaking down the bell, but it's the best, it's the national association.
The best.
It's the best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So here's a hard question.
Okay.
What happens next August 2025? Money, you know, are there any other sources that you might be able to draw from besides the county? Not that we're not willing to give some, but...
As a matter of fact, we have three large funders who have been funding this that will allow us to go into what used to be considered as year four funding, because initially this funding through ARPA was thought to be that it was only going to be getting through three years. What we realized, could we absolutely spend that money in three years? Yep. Would it make more sense to draw it out a little bit more and make sure we're using it for the right reason as we were ramping up and doing that? We didn't start actually doing any outside reach until year two. If you think about it, we had to build the brand, do the charrettes, do all that. So we do have funding from McLaren Bay Region, Dow, and S V S U, who all gave for a three-year period. So we have that, those dollars that are sitting in our foundation right now and have not been touched to be able to utilize. We do have the ability to continue to raise funds from the private sector, and we have been having conversations. There's also the opportunity to make this on a regional aspect. We know that while it's great to just promote Bay City, if we're going to be able to sustain this funding long-term, it might be something that we can leverage our partners in Saginaw and Midland and look at, does Hay Great Lakes Bay, is that an opportunity? So those are things that were being discussed at our board level and with our other community partners, but there is funding that is set aside, that is not ARPA funding, that is aside, and we have about 400, let me do my math, I think it's 450,000 set aside. So we do have funding, and we will need more to continue to sustain that, though.
And Bay Cities also, are you getting some funding from Bay City also?
We have the same amount of funding, just about, from the city and the county, and we gave that same report to them, and then we do a draw, we, we share the same financials of where their draws are at. While we try to do 50/50, Amber, Shawna, you know, in seeing it, if we're splitting payroll, it's not 50% goes to the county and 50% goes to the city. So while all of our expenses are there, it's not necessarily a divide in half. It's we're drawing it down as we're going.
Good. Thank you.
I got one question. Phil, I was on there the other day, and there was like 100 and some jobs offerings. Now, there was a couple that was over a year old. They were updated. Are those updated, or they just eliminated after a certain time?
It depends on how the employer lists that job. So some, there's a little selection when you create a job listing, that either you can list it indefinitely, so some employers just throw that bobber in the water. They're always looking for new salespeople, and so they just throw that bobber in the water and they let it sit there. Other people might have screwed that up. And so we, there's a email reminder, I believe, that when it gets to a certain period, it sends them an email and says, "Hey, do you still want this listed or not?" And so then it's up to them. So it's, the job listings are really controlled by the employer who created them. And so, yeah, we, we can send maybe follow-up emails to them to kind of clean some of that out, maybe, but we, we also respect that if they want that bobber in the water indefinitely, we'll leave it there. So, yeah. But I, but I will say, and yeah, and then I'll let you jump on. I will say to any Bay County employer that is listening to this right now or watching this, please, please, please put your jobs on Hay Bay City. We get 20,000 views, almost 20,000 views every single month of people that want to work in Bay County. And so if we have 100 jobs, we can only, we have a limited amount of people that those jobs are going to fit. If we have 300 jobs, man, that ceiling just explodes with the amount of possibilities we have, and that's really up to employers. We try to do a one-on-one, we're going to help you, and we're going to create your account, but in the end, we need Bay County employers to list their positions on Hay Bay City job board. It is free, and it is easy and awesome.
And then with my employer meetings, I do meet with those employers that are posting those jobs and go over them, the old postings. Some of those may be updated because we're changing verbiage on the job description. So I do go in and reach out to those employers that have jobs on there. I tend to go anything over three months and reach out just to let them know that they have an extra resource.
Okay, thank you. I got one more, Sarah.
Yeah.
Also, I was on there, I see a few Bay City ones for, for their, for job openings. I don't see any Bay County ones in there.
Who'd be, who's the HR person here at Bay County?
I'm just, I'm just asking a question. I don't know. I didn't see any Bay County ones.
Okay.
I see a few Bay Cities, so...
Yep. Yep, the city, the city has someone that puts those on there, but I would be happy, and if it's Tiffany here, I would be happy to reach out to her and sit down and speak with her about that.
Yeah, because we have openings. It'll be nice just to get it more exposure.
Great, I have opportunities.
Yeah. I will say that there have been a bunch. There, there may not be ones necessarily that are open. I'd have to look right now, but we, we get consistently a lot of postings from the county. So whoever that HR person is, you're awesome. Let's throw more jobs on there.
I was just on there last night. I didn't see hardly any, so that's what I was wondering. Okay, anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to receive.
Spar.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Equalization Director, L.4029, 2024 Tax Rate Request.
So.
Support.
Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Posting on motion carries. The Bay County Fair Board, date request for 2025.
So moved. Support.
Is there any questions? I have one. We're going to be having the animal shelter construction. Is that going to interfere with your dates out there? There's going to be animal shelter construction out there, the new shelter. Is there going to be any interference with your dates with those?
With the dates?
Yes.
Um, no.
Okay.
I mean, we're, the property, yes, but not the dates.
Okay. All right.
That's fine.
Okay, thanks, Mayor Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Posting on motion carries. The Recreation Facilities Director, lease agreement with Michigan Hockey Development Program.
Support.
During discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Posting on motion carries. Finance Officer, waiver of ordinance amendment process, Bay County Ordinance Number 28 Budget Stabilization Fund.
So moved. Support.
During discussion on this?
Just want to mention this requires a two-third vote for us to act on it immediately. That, that's what this resolution is about, and what the other resolution.
Tom.
Why, why is we going through 20 to 15? So it's a lot, where's the logic that's our one? Because I don't know.
Sure. So I mentioned last year that we might want to consider lowering it from 20 to 15. So it had been 15, and that was the max allowed by law, and then the law changed and it increased to 20%. The reason I'm suggesting it is because there's only four ways in which we can access those budget stabilization funds, and they're set by law. They're very prescribed, and we've even gone through a global pandemic and not had to access them because of the way. So it's, if there's, to cover a general fund deficit, when our audit reveals a deficit, to cover a reduction in the level of public services or number of employees, so if we're looking at layoffs, to prevent a reduction in public services or number of employees when preparing for the budget cycle, and our revenue doesn't appear to be sufficient, or to cover expenses arising because of a natural disaster, flood, fire, tornado. However, if we receive federal or state funds, we have to put that money back as it relates to that. So while I think it's important to have contingency funds, I don't think that this is necessarily the mechanism to keep that amount of funds in. You have more flexibility if you keep it in your general fund or, you know, allocated or restricted in a different way. But these are the, the, the very specific ways set by law that you can access this money. So I'm recommending taking it from 20 to 15, and then there's an overpayment of 3.99%. So next year, if you needed to add to your budget stabilization, that may offset any amount you'd need to contribute next year as well.
Did, what is it? I know you know, not everybody in the state, but what's, is there a general number that people use, or that?
Oh, good question. I do not know. I don't have a good survey of who's doing that around the state. I know that we have always been fiscally responsible, and this is another mechanism where we're being fiscally responsible. I just don't think whether we're at 15 or 20%, I think both are both, both numbers are very fiscally responsible. And we do use a five-year average. We try to smooth it so that it's not just we're taking a one-year bump in any year, that we're sort of looking at a long-term picture. So we take a five-year average of our budget, and then we take a five-year average of that percentage to smooth it out as best we can without being actuaries, to make sure that we're not being too sensitive to any one budget year.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
I remember when we went to 20%, that, you know, it was actually before the pandemic, and probably was a good foresight that things were going to happen down the road, and we just hope nothing bad happens again.
Absolutely.
That was, that was 2016, correct?
It was 16.
Well, they switched it over. Previous to that, the max allowable, by the state was 15.
Was 15, yes.
Right. So they allowed that, that 5% variance, and they changed that over. And you said there were four different ways it could be used. It was, if there was a deficit that was going to happen, of course. If you anticipated a level of services drop, so potential layoffs, and then there was the natural disasters, the...
So it's actually if there's a level of services that are going to be dropped because you're not anticipating revenues?
Got it.
Or you're in, in the amount expected to, at any time when the budget revenue is not collected, so when you're having actual non-collections and when you budget for non-collections. So either your collections come in and they're, you know, we anticipate a certain number of property tax collections, maybe it's half of what you anticipated or something because of something happening in the community, or you're budgeting and you're like, wow, we're going to have to reduce services because we are not going to have enough revenue to cover.
And right now, there's 18.99, right?
That, this, yeah, it would be 18.
Almost 4% more than what you need.
Yep.
So that down the road, you may not have to push the payments over in the future, and definitely wouldn't have to this year.
Definitely not this year.
Do you, I hate to ask you this, but do you happen to remember how much we would move over usually? You know, do you feel like an estimate?
Um...
Because I know you'd be coming up at a point where we would have to allocate dollars to get that back up to 20.
Right. And so if we would have kept it the same, you would be allocating $387,000 this year to get up to the 20,000, which that's about the right number. I'm remembering about a $500,000 that we've moved over, so it must have been two years ago. It's, it's around that range to keep it in there.
It's a pretty, it's a pretty small number that we have more of the way to be able to use or access if needed.
Sure.
So for example, a couple of these things are coming up down the road on this agenda, where you may have to move money someplace, wait for it to arrive from somewhere else, and you have the flexibility of...
For sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Seeing none, motion carries.
Now we can talk about it again.
Amendment to the Ordinance Number 28 Budget Stabilization.
So.
During discussion on this one?
We did it already.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Seeing none, motion carries. The review adjustment budget stabilization for the year ending December 31st, 2023.
So.
Support.
During discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Seeing none, motion carries. The Animal Control Construction Short-Term Financing.
So moved.
During discussion on this? Yes.
How, how much are we going to be short?
Oh, depends on when we start construction, what the expenses are. It's really a cash management issue. There's obviously a cap on the project, which is, you know, the total cost of the millage plus expenses. We've, you know, forecasted that into the, for the life of the millage, but it's, we're really not sure. It will depend upon the progress, and we're getting, we're getting very close. So we'll have estimates, and you'll be able to get updates as we go along.
The last two years have not been good for construction costs and...
And that's all being monitored very carefully. I mean, there, there would never be a time that we would overspend on what we anticipate collecting unless there was some other conversation about it, but currently it's being built to, within the confines of the budget of the millage.
You know, it's take an estimate, you know, what's going to happen two years down the road, and it doesn't always pan out what the expenses are going to be.
Sure. I have some financial analysis that's been done that I am happy to share with you to look at that, if that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Was the last case, was that, that bill was withdrawn?
No, this is actually year three.
Year three.
Year three. Actually, I can, for the full board meeting, I can bring back some more analysis, if that would be helpful.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Posting on motion carries. Number five, land bank demolition and excavation project, short-term financing.
Support.
Is there any discussion?
We have our treasurer here. We'll recall him up.
Yeah, so this is a very exciting project. This is hands-down the most money the land bank's brought in, ever. $2.1 million will go through, and we will tear down the old Y, the old county market, and a couple of little partner structures in between. Hopefully, will result in somewhere between 104 and 112 new housing units that the Housing Commission is going to do. We will not be involved in the building of the new units, that will all be a Housing Commission project, but we're looking at probably about a $40 million development that will go in there in place of those structures.
Okay. Yes, phone.
Then I won't be getting asked, what are we going to do with the market?
You will not have that question any longer, hopefully. Hopefully, by January, you will no longer see it either, so that'll be the plan at the moment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wesley.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posting on motion carries. Number six, Information Systems Agreement with Law Enforcement Agencies, Multi-Factor Authorization.
Support.
Is there any discussion? We've got Julie here.
I have a question, so...
Okay, we're asking, no.
Maybe later.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Posting on motion carries. The Information System Agreement with Vertif and Purchase of Cooling System for CDW-G.
Support.
During discussion. I got a question. Julie? What kind of a cooling system is this? This is built-in, a system?
So it's actually, it's going to be a rectangle unit, and it's designed specifically for data centers. So the whole premise behind the unit is it does the cooling across all of the server racks, as opposed to blowing air on top of the room, which is currently in there. So the current situation that we have in the room is we have two cooling units, one of them broke, and it's not able to be repaired, so we're down to one. So while it's not, this is an emergency purchase, this is something that we, you know, would like to have done, and it will cool the entire room, and, you know, there's going to be maintenance and things on the unit, and the life of the unit is about 20 years. So we have enough space where if we move some stuff together, it will fit right at the end, and it'll go across the, to cool all the racks in the room.
Because I saw the price tag of $40,000, I was wondering, Hawaii is a little high.
And it's because it's such an advanced system that is designed specifically for data centers.
Okay.
And we have other area counties that are looking and putting very similar systems in. And it's just, and overall, with the 20-year life of it, it, I think it will get enough use out of it.
That's fine. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
You said this was anticipated, because...
We had another one. Next one's more...
Right, so we have two units, there's an older one, and there's a newer one, and so we anticipated at some point we might have needed to replace it, but we don't replace something in there unless it's absolutely broken, and that's what happened. And so instead of installing an additional, instead of installing two new residential cooling units, we're getting the commercial unit that's designed for data centers.
They're taking some steps to cover up the windows.
Absolutely. So there were three things that they recommended. Access Michigan, which we've worked with before, they sell the Vertif equipment, which we have in our data center right now, our battery backup is in there, and that's a Vertif equipment. So they recommend three things. They recommended covering up the windows with foam board, which we're working to remedy that, install a unit, but then also, after reinstall the cooling unit, there are empty spaces in the rack, and they recommend us, which we don't need, ask additional funds, we have, that would be such a large expense that would be able to cover that, I don't need that, but basically, cover up the open spaces in the rack so that the air cycles better, so it doesn't get trapped, and with the cycling of the air, they recommend having it all completely closed off, and that way, when it blows across, there's no, it doesn't essentially lose cool air.
Okay.
Did you have something else?
I was going to have you stay up, don't walk back, I was going to have a question on the next.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Posting on motion carries. The next one, number eight, Information Systems Acceptable Use Policy.
Support.
During discussion.
Yes.
So this is an update from a long time ago, and I'm sure things have changed a lot, and...
It has. The original one was written 1999, and it referenced voicemail a lot. So what we did is we did a combination of recommendations what other counties use, and then there's a specific clause that we put in for artificial intelligence. ChatGPT is a great tool to use for marketing material, but we want to make sure that we put that clause in there for it to be business use only, and not use any personal data in there.
Good, thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Julie.
Anything about pagers or that type of thing?
It might have had, I'd have to pull it up. I mean, I should have it memorized by now, but it was, it was a doozy.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posting on motion carries. Is there any referrals?